Welcome to this candidate forum for White Bear School District 624. I am Liz Nordling, a member of the League of Women Voters of White Bear Lake area, but I live outside of School District 624, and I will be your moderator. The League of Women Voters is a nonprofit volunteer organization which encourages citizens to participate in government. Our mission is to support voter education and voters' rights. Though the League studies and takes positions on issues, we do not support or oppose any candidate or political party. Our goal is to encourage citizens to learn more about the positions of the candidates who will be on the ballot on November 5th. All candidates who filed to run for this position were invited to participate, and tonight we have six candidates. They are Scott Arkand, Brian Cern, Tim Klecker, Dan Skar, and R. Scott Smith, Angela Thompson. Each candidate will begin with an opening statement, and they have one minute for their opening statement, and we will go in alphabetical order, so we will begin with Scott Arkand.
Thank you. I want to start by thanking the League of Women Voters for putting this on. I think it's important that the members of our community get to hear from us. I want to talk a little bit about what my why is. Why am I here? Why do I think school board is important? As a graduate of White Bear Lake Schools and my family of White Bear Lake and Hugo areas, I feel committed to these schools because as a graduate, I gained the foundational skills I needed to go on and get a Bachelor's of Science in Education, and then it allowed me to go on and get a Master's of Teaching and Learning, and then a Doctorate of Educational Leadership. With those things, I've been able to raise a family. I've been able to bring my kids here. I've been able to have them graduate from these schools, and now they're all being successful. My main goal is this community and the students in it. I am committed for them to be able to have the same success that I had as a graduate of White Bear Lake. Thank you.
Thank you. Now with his opening statement, Brian Cern.
Thank you. I'm Brian Cern. I have a fifth grader in the district. I moved to the district about 11 years ago, and when we moved here, my wife and I obviously took schools into huge consideration. One of our favorite, or one of our factors was how welcoming the district is, how ability to adjust to the needs that our then-one-year-old may have as he developed. What were the opportunities that would develop? I've been a very involved parent, serving on our PTA, in fact, helping to co-found and lead the PTA at the new school up in Hugo. I've made a habit of asking all of our teachers, what is it that you need? And then dedicating my time to making that happen, and I look forward to continuing that work on the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Now with his opening statement, Tim Klecker.
Thank you. My name is Tim Klecker. I'm a lifelong resident here in White Bear Lake. I've got three kids, and two of which are still walking down the same hallways that I did when I graduated in 2002. I went on to get my degree from Bemidji State University before getting my Master's in Children, Youth, and Family Ministry through Luther Seminary, Theological Seminary down in St. Paul. Currently, I work as a financial goals coach, and I am a licensed master life coach as well, where I focus on helping people with their financial practices, like budgeting, savings, making financial plans, and that type of area, and of course, behavioral modification as well. So I am absolutely thrilled to be up here with all these other people and to be considered as a nominee for the school board. I feel like it is my responsibility as a parent and as a citizen to step up and to be able to make a difference where our children are concerned and where the values of our community lie.
Thank you. Now with his opening statement, Dan Skar.
Hello, I'm Dan Skar, and I'm running for school board. I live in Hugo. I grew up in our area. I'm a product of public schools, proud product of public schools. While in college, I worked as a custodian at White Bear Lake Schools. My mother graduated from the school district back in the day, so I have some familiarity, I have familiarity with our community. I'm married with three grown children who live in the area. I have two grandchildren who are also in the school district. I'm a licensed CPA, and I have an MBA from St. Thomas. Education and preparing our kids for the future is the most important priority for a community. Those links have to be strong. My wives, again, I have two grandkids in our district, so I'm vested in our success. I want to use my experience to improve our schools. I've got over 30 years of experience leading for-profit, nonprofit organizations. I have board experience. I've worked with many school districts across the country on facility upgrades, and most recently, mental health issues caused by social media. I want to make White Bear Lake Schools a beacon of excellence and get better returns on academics for our taxes. We can do both.
Thank you. Now with his opening statement is Scott Smith.
Yeah, thank you. My name is R. Scott Smith. First, I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for the opportunity to participate in this forum. A little bit about me, I am a 24-year resident of White Bear Lake. I've been married to my wife Cynthia for 35 years, and we've raised three sons here in White Bear. I am also a proud 3-immer, continuing to work to this day, and I'm an active volunteer in the community, from coaching in the White Bear Baseball League several years ago, to being a marshal in the man-of-two-day parades, regularly serving as Eagle Brook Church, and serving meals to men at Union Gospel Mission most Fridays. You'll find me there. Now, I have a firm belief that every person has gifts and abilities which can benefit the whole, and that our primary task is really to discover those gifts, exercise and develop them, and then share them with others. And I hope to be given that opportunity to share my gifts with this community as a future board member.
Thank you. Now with her opening statement, Angela Thompson.
Hi, yes, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for all you do. You're all volunteers, and I greatly appreciate that. I have lived in the White Bear Lake community all of my life. While I did not graduate out of White Bear Lake Schools, I did attend White Bear Lake Schools for part of my elementary and middle school career. I have two children in the district. Well, one graduated in '21, one is currently in the district set to graduate in '27. I have been happily married for 29 years to my husband, who is also a member of our community and has lived in the community for most of his life as well. I would ask for everybody to just reelect me in November so that we continue the work we've been doing for the past four years and ensuring that all of our students are successful in their careers in our school district.
Thank you. We'll now move on to questions. Questions were received in advance from the public and reviewed by a committee of League members. We will not use questions that are unclear, hostile, or of a personal nature, and we may consolidate questions that fall within the same general topic area. All questions submitted are the property of the League of Women Voters. Each candidate will have up to three, up to one minute to answer, and each candidate has also the opportunity for up to two rebuttals to clarify information or to rebut another candidate's responses. Each rebuttal time is 30 seconds, and a candidate may use only one rebuttal to each question. So we'll move on to the first question, and it goes to Angela Thompson first. What are the three most pressing challenges facing the White Bear Lake School District?
Well, academic success of our students, that is something that our district has been paying attention to since before the COVID pandemic broke out. And then, obviously, things, once the COVID pandemic broke out, it definitely got worse for our students for their mental health and their ability to be successful in school and to focus on their education. But due to our district's leadership, they, these were things that they were already looking at prior to the pandemic, and so once the pandemic hit, they really picked up their pace on what they could do to help our students be successful. And with the support of the board, I believe that we are going in the right direction with implementing many programs that help our students, such as a multi-tiered system of support, a BAR program, which is building assets, reducing risks. And then, another issue that I find to be one of great importance is our funding. The funding, general funding of a public school has not kept pace with inflation since 2003. That is of great importance to me, and I see that as something we need to advocate at the state and legislative levels.
Thank you. The question now goes to Dan Skar.
I think the three most pressing challenges we have are academics, enrollment, and safe and peaceful schools. And academics and enrollment are joined at the hip, so to speak, because if you lose focus on academics, parents and students leave, and we have seen that, a net reduction of students of 800 as a result of open enrollment. So academics is a laser focus on that, cutting the clutter around academics as well, and focusing on educating. Enrollment, I think, again, that impacts our funding in the future. We have to get our enrollment. We have to bring our kids back. We have to retain our kids and not export them to other districts. And then, safe and peaceful schools. The learning environment should be free of disruptions, including phones, and destructive behaviors. So one of the number-one reasons teachers are dissatisfied is because classrooms have become disruptive.
Thank you. The question now goes to Scott Arkand.
The three most pressing challenges we see today is, first, safe and welcoming schools. Students have to feel welcomed in our buildings and feel like they belong. When a student doesn't feel like they're welcome or feel like they belong, it creates them to get anxiety, it raises other issues, and it actually inhibits the learning process. So it's important that we create windows and mirrors where they can see themselves in our schools and in our curriculum. That leads right to the academic excellence. If we can do that, we can also start focusing on the standards we need to be teaching, and we can start pulling data to see where we're at and examining it. And then we have to look at our funding, because since 2003, the expenses of running a school system has gone up far more than funding, and so as of today, we are about $11 million short of what we were in 2003. So those things working together, we have to continue to work on those to make sure that our students are successful.
Thank you. The question now goes to Scott Smith.
Yes, thank you. First and foremost, I think academic excellence and achievement is probably one of my biggest concerns. I think grade level proficiencies have been declining well before 2020. I'm running to ensure that the district is focused on improving student academic outcomes in alignment with the values of the community. Second, it's all about safety, order, and respect in the classroom. I will prioritize funding to support frontline educators and to help restore, and then advocate for consistent application of the consequences with fair implementation, to help restore order and respect for staff and the school facilities. And then, you know, I would say transparency in leadership, making sure that every program has clear and measurable student-based outcomes that are reported consistently, reviewed frequently, to allow for corrections over the measured time period. And I will be a liaison between residents and the administration to really make sure that the community's concerns are heard.
Thank you. The question now goes to Tim Klecker.
Thank you. Yeah, I think what we're really talking about here is how do we order our priorities? So academic success is absolutely a focus of mine, for sure, as many people up here will say. I know that there are a number of ways that you can measure academic success, but if you look at the MCA scores recently, unfortunately, since 2019, we've dropped 15% on average as opposed to the state, which only dropped 10%. So we need to get focused back on that, figure out what's going on, and try to increase that score. I think transparency also between community, parents particularly, and schools is vital to the success of students, overall ability to achieve and to grow and to continue to learn. And of course, safety, being a major feature that a lot of people mention up here, that includes physical safety, emotional safety, and mental safety. All of those contribute overall to a healthy learning environment, which allows students to explore not just who they are, but what is it that they can be good at? What are the things that they can accomplish and turn that question of can I into how can I?
Thank you. The question now goes to Brian Cern.
Top of the list for me would be access. There are a number of barriers, both economic and social, in today's climate to the opportunities that we have that provide and enhance our educational situation. We have to be able to provide our access and equal access without bias to all of our students. Again, as others have said, we have to provide our students with not only a physically safe environment, but as well as a psychologically and emotionally secure environment as well. And also, a very innovative environment. We have to maintain an innovative workplace. As the world continues to grow and change, we have to empower our educators to develop new methods, and we maintain flexibility to adjust to the changes that the world is facing.
Thank you. Does anyone have any additional comments? Dan Skar?
I think my additional comment would be around the focus on education for the school district and getting our academics up, which I think is the number-one priority.
Thank you. Additional comment? Angela Thompson?
Thank you. Yes, I also, you know, career pathways is a big passion of mine, so that is something that is of great importance to me. But when it comes to finding new ways to test our students' academic success, we have to look at new ways of doing that. Standardized testing is an outdated method that is not necessarily beneficial to our students anymore, and one of the things that our district has done is implement something called letters training, and it's a literacy program that we are currently seeing the reduced... So just as an example, we had students that were at a 78% in the green, which means their overall learning, the how-to-read, 13% in a yellow, which means there's a little bit of risk, so they pay a little more attention to them and provide them with the things that they need. And then we had a 9% student risk rate, and that was for 23-24 winter.
Anyone else? Then we'll move on to the next question, and it goes to Brian Cern first. Of the challenges you described, which would be your top priority, and how would you address it?
I would have to say access. Two years ago, as I was serving as president of the North Star Elementary PTA, I learned a rather shocking stat that actually changed how I perceived my job in that, and that was that 30% of the families in that school qualified for free lunch. Another 10% or so were on the bubble. Now, you can legislate that stat away. The fact of the matter is that you can't legislate the environment that they have at home. So what that means is that there is still a barrier to access, either physical or emotional, that limits a person's ability to perform within the resources that they have at school. We have to make sure, even if it is just reassurance, hey, you can do this, or hey, let's provide income streams, scholarships, grants, endowments, that every student, regardless of income, gender, orientation, race, has the ability to utilize the gifts that they've been given.
Thank you. Question now goes to Angela Thompson.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Of the challenges you described, which would be your top priority, and how would you address it?
Well, I think that it would be funding, because for me, funding is how our district is able to provide all the resources and the tools that help our educators and our students be successful in their careers when they're within our school district walls. So for me, it's advocating for our community members to advocate at the legislative and the state levels for the increase in our funding to meet with inflation of today. We can't compare, we can't move forward in, I'm sorry, I'm losing my train of thought.
Then I'll move on to the next person, Dan Skar.
Well, of all of the three priorities I mentioned, it starts with a focus on education, and embedded in that is their strategic plan and their mission, which I think they did a great job of going out to the community to get input. That's the right approach, but it's too cluttered. I just want to read you this mission. "The mission of the White Bear Lake School Area District, the community at the forefront of educational excellence, honoring our legacy and courageously building the future, is to ensure a student realizes their unique talents and abilities and makes meaningful contributions with local and global impact through a vital system distinguished by students who design and create their own future." And then there's four other bullets. I think benchmarking is helpful. I have one of the top districts in the country, which is Consolidated School District 181 out of Illinois. Its demographics are exactly the same as ours. Here's their mission: "To provide a premier educational experience that teaches students to be critical thinkers and enables them to achieve their full potential academically, socially, and emotionally." So we have clutter on one end, clarity on the other.
Thank you. Question now goes to Scott Arkand.
One of the most pressing things we want to do with our students is work on their why. Why do I have to know this? Why am I learning it? I am a big believer in career pathways, because in there, they can find their pathways, and all of a sudden, they find out why I need to know this science, why I need to know this math. And contextually, when they learn a subject area in like the trades, it makes meaning because they connect it up, and oh, that's why we do that. So it's important that we allow students to learn the academics in the electives that they have an option to take. Also then, it also is important that we understand that for them to plan out options when they graduate, they don't have to have their life planned out, but they have to know, here's some things I think I can do after high school. It's extremely important. If we send students onto college, we just kind of to find themselves, we can't do that. It's too expensive. The college costs are running up to $300,000 a year to get a four-year degree. We cannot afford to have our students do career exploration in college. That's why we have it here in the high schools.
Thank you. The question goes to Scott Smith.
Thank you. You know, the primary mission of our schools is to equip our students to succeed, and the foundation of building blocks of that is reading, math, science. And we are not succeeding in that mission right now. Our test scores have continued to decline. You know, I'm hearing about, you know, the old ways of teaching and things are not sufficient any longer. However, we had higher test scores back when we were using different methodologies. My position is I want to get in and understand the why. Why are our kids not learning? I think there are a lot of things, a lot of programs that are being implemented in the district. We need to understand, for every program that's implemented, what is the benefit to the student, and how will it help them achieve their academic achievement and excellence?
Thank you. The question now goes to Tim Klecker.
Yeah, I think setting stronger, more robust goals is my main focus, is the thing that I want to focus on the most. You know, our board meeting agenda, in my opinion, should be filled with primarily focusing, reviewing, and measuring the progress when it comes to those goals. That way, as a board, you can make the right decisions in real time from month to month, quarter to quarter, semester to semester. You can monitor what the superintendent and the administrators and the teachers are doing, and we can help them to make pivots if we need to. In regards to, you know, results, results are great to aim for, but just focusing on results rather than outcomes tends to lead people maybe to change the system, and so that you get better results based on the amended system. And at times, we do need to amend the system to flow with the times, but we want to really focus on what are those outcomes? That does involve digging into the why. But to know what's your why isn't really get there. We have to work with every student individually to dig into what is it that you're called to, where is it that you want to go? And so that's a vital process, I think, in all of this.
Thank you. Additional comments? Angela.
Yes, so just back to the testing and the outdated portion of it that I had mentioned before, is we were failing many students. We were failing our students who were economically struggling. We were failing our students of the BIPOC population. And in order to bring those children forward and make sure that they're successful today, as well as all of our students, we have to find new ways of measuring that. And that is one of the things that our multi-tiered system of support does. It takes the testing and looks at it in a three-tier program where we can see where the risks are, we can see where the strengths are, and then we can address those issues. And we're just starting to collect that data, and it is looking very promising.
Thank you. Additional comments? Dan?
Well, you know, I think I was never a good test taker throughout my whole academic career, and still not, but it's a reality. I mean, we have to take a written test to get a driver's license. It's a data point. It's an important data point. I have to take a test to maintain my license as a CPA. It's a reality. It's a data point. It's an important data point because it demonstrates a level of competency. Is it everything? No, but it's an important data point.
Thank you. Scott?
And I just want to say that we're not here to say the MCAs are totally bad. They're one data point we want to look at, but we have to look at other pieces of data that go along with it. Because like I said, when I was doing my doctorate, they impressed upon me that one piece of data is not enough, look at two, three, four, or five. So it's important that we don't just look at MCA scores, but we have, gather a variety of data to see how our students are doing.
We're going to move on to the next question, and it will go to Tim Klecker first. The projected budget for the 24-25 school year is $146 million. What experiences have you had that will help you, as a school board member, carry out your financial oversight responsibilities?
It's a great question. Money, obviously, is a hot topic behind this counter here today. As a financial goals coach with the customers that I work with, the clients that I work with, we are definitely very much about budgeting and about organizing priorities so that the budget can satisfy top priorities first, and that means sometimes having to make tough decisions about what gets cut, maybe what gets less funding. So my focus when it comes to the budget is to first, again, establish what the goals are and the priorities of the school district, make sure that those things are covered first and foremost, especially when it comes to outcomes with students. The budget itself, I know, has a bunch of different buckets and pools and things like that, but if we can actually agree on that vision and that mission, we can then come down to a stronger budgeting system, prioritize the right things that help improve student outcomes.
Thank you. The question now goes to Dan Skar.
And the question had to do with my background. Could you repeat that? I'm very sorry.
The projected budget for the 24-25 school year is $146 million. What experiences have you had that will help you, as a school board member, carry out your financial oversight responsibilities?
Oh, thank you. Well, you know, first of all, my academic and professional background helps. I'm a licensed certified public accountant in the state of Minnesota. I was a former CFO at a for-profit and nonprofit company, and a former CEO as well, and I'm running my own consulting company. So I think that helps. And I want to circle back to the zero-based budgeting exercise, because a lot of times that I've went into organizations, there is a certain amount of momentum, you know, bureaucratic momentum, organizational momentum. It's not good or bad, it's just momentum. And you need to get clarity on your costs. So the zero-based budgeting exercise, justifying every cost to every program to determine whether you're efficient or effective, is great. Now, the school district does a great job of financial reporting. They've won awards for that. They should be congratulated for that, but that does not mean that the dollars are efficient or effective.
Thank you. The question now goes to Angela Thompson.
Being on the board for the last four years, I think, has given me the ability to see what school financing is all about, and it is a very complicated system that cannot be compared to a for-profit company. Just alone in our cross-subsidy, last year, our budget, they were within 1.4 million of our, we had 1.4 million in deficit spending. Of that, 1.1 million was due to underfunded cross-subsidy in special education alone in our district. So having mandated requirements that the district has to follow, but without the funding to implement those is a struggle. So if I was to look at even just my own household income from 2003 to today and compare my income to what I had at 2003 to what I have today, it is not the same thing. So I can't, I couldn't live today off of what I earned in 2003, and that's what our current school funding is based on, the 2003. We have not kept pace with inflation.
Thank you. Question now goes to Brian Cern.
In my professional life, I am a benefits consultant. I work with small, medium-sized businesses and nonprofits doing employee benefits. In one case, I saved a medium-sized nonprofit's $53,000 annually, year over year, just by taking a hard look at their benefits program. I enabled a small, family-run automotive garage to open a second location, again, by taking a look at their programs. And it's what I do for a living, by analyzing their expenses and seeing how we can reallocate programs.
Thank you. The question now goes to Scott Arkand.
When we look at the 25-26 budget, we're looking at, right now, we'll probably be looking at some kind of budget adjustment. So if we have to do that, and that's part of being a board and moving forward, is making that hard decision. The first thing we want to do, though, we put a priority when we look at our budgets, to keep it away from the classroom as much as possible, because the number-one reason we're all here is students. The second thing we'll have to do, and every time when we look at this, is what programs are working, what programs are being efficient? If there are programs that's just not worth it, then maybe that's the program we have to look to eliminate. And then finally, we want buy-in from the community. I've heard that over and over. We need to bring the stakeholders in. What innovations do you have? What do you think we can do? Get their input so that we have buy-in from them before we move forward, but those are important. But number-one thing we have to do is make sure it stays away from the classroom and the students have what they need.
Thank you. The question now goes to Scott Smith.
Yeah, thank you. You know, having been in the corporate environment for 30-plus years, I've managed, I've had a lot of experience managing very large portfolios in excess of $200, $300 million. I've had full P&L responsibility to make sure that we're hitting our top-line goals, our cost goals, our bottom-line goals. I think that experience is invaluable, whether it's a business, a school, it's an organization with $146 million budget, all of those things still apply. I would also kind of echo that we need to take a look at what programs are effective, where are their shortfalls, and what is delivering towards those student outcomes, be they are, you know, basically, our academic performance. So I have experience also on the board... So I have experience also on the board of Eaglebrook Church, helped that organization navigate through, you know, some large growth initiatives that set them up for the future, and I look forward to using that experience here on the board.
Thank you. Does anyone have any additional comments? Yes, Tim Klecker.
Yeah. So I suppose the question I have when it comes to funding comments, I agree funding's a problem, but what's the solution for funding? At least, what's the solution that a school can take part in? So if we're stating that the challenge, you know, is funding, we're also not stating necessarily what the solution is. Now, I can say that I, as a parent and as a father, that I'm not getting paid enough from my job to pay for my bills, but I still have to figure out a way to make my bills work. I can't necessarily make my job pay me more money. So enrollment, that, you know, tends to equal funding. Enrollment tends to be impacted also by higher outcomes.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'm sorry, Dan, you've used up all your options. Anyone else? So we're going to move on to the next question, and it will go to Scott Smith first. Other than financial, what other strengths do you have that make you uniquely qualified to be a school board member?
You know, I have a passion for excellence. I have a passion for helping others. I think I've benefited, my family have benefited from this community over the years. I desire to give back. You know, I'm a servant leader. I like to gather information, work with other people on problem-solving. I am a certified Six Sigma Black Belt, which is basically somebody who's a process analyzer, if you would, to try to understand where is there waste in a system and how can you improve it? What are those critical factors that you can identify and then put some controls and measures around to affect improvement? So I would also use some of my marketing background skills for questionnaires, surveys, focus groups, to really gain the voice of the community and teachers and, you know, constituents so that we can come up with solutions to our challenges.
Thank you. The question now goes to Angela Thompson.
Well, I would say just my life experiences. My life experiences are something that have brought me to where I am today. They provided me with knowledge and compassion for all people. So as a, somebody who didn't get to go to college because I didn't have the means to go to college when I graduated high school, but thankfully, I was provided a career pathway that allowed me to be successful in my life up until this point. I did go to college as an adult, and I just graduated last year with my bachelor's of social work from St. Catherine University. I believe in empowering others to find their areas that can help them be successful in life, and that is a huge passion of mine in this district, is to ensure that every single student has a way and a path to be successful in whatever it is that they choose to do when they leave our district.
Thank you. Question now goes to Brian Cern.
I've been very involved with my school, my kid's school, and I've been very involved to the point where I can see those kids that did not have means to necessarily grow, flourish when they have the chance. And that's just been a motivator in my life, to give all those kids the chance that I did not necessarily have myself. And if you're not motivated by something like that in your life, then why are we here? What's the point if we're not fighting to give every kid the chance on a fundamental micro-day-to-day level? Then it's just, it's words. Get involved with the schools. Join the PTA. Raise the funds. Enable the field trip.
Thank you. Question goes to Tim Klecker.
You know, motivations are different for everyone. We don't all have the same motivations. We don't all have the same direction. And to try to create a structure where everybody needs to necessarily be motivated to do the exact same thing is maybe not necessarily the best approach, in my opinion. As a behaviorist and coach, one of the skills that I absolutely am able to bring is I am able to bring clarity around the why, to really dig until we find the why, so that we can have a better idea of what the what itself is. Then we go into the how do we do that, right? Making sure that we have clarity around those goals, that they're stated clear, that we know what we're aiming for, and that every school board meeting, we touch on what those goals are. We ask ourselves, where are we in the process? What needs to be pivoted on? What are some things that we discovered that maybe now we need to add to this plan so we can keep going to that final outcome? You know, I've taken the Strengths Finders test, I don't know if anybody else has taken that as well. My top five actually all fall into the strategic category, which is not necessarily the most common thing. And so I'm able to take those strategic abilities and my skills and expertise in goal-setting to help us do that.
Thank you. Question goes to Dan Skar.
We help everyone here is unique and different, brings perspective, and, you know, quite frankly, that's what makes life more interesting. What I'm really good at is getting ideas, and not just my own ideas, I love other people's ideas, and translating those ideas into concrete improvements. I did it within federal government regulation, and I can do it through the school administration and school regulations. The other thing is, you know, I'm a true North leader, which means what you see is what you get. I'm transparent. Truth, I tell it the way it is, which brings, you know, trust. So developing those trust relationships with everyone that I meet, colleagues, even within the school board, that's how I would lead, and I would gain trust through the leadership of the school. Thank you.
Thank you. The question goes to Scott Arkand.
Thank you. What I bring to the table every day is I have over 38 years' experience working in schools. I understand how students learn. I understand how to unpack a standard. I understand how to do assessments. I have that background under what I've been doing for the last 38 years, like I said. I have a life commitment to this community, and that's important because I want this community to be successful. For the, over the last 150 years, and Arkand has been in this community, serving in some way or the other, and I have some of the history. I remember the, some of the times that we had. I remember the hard times in the 80s when we struggled as a school system and the community didn't trust us. I have a passion for children. I want our students and our children to be successful to go on. And so I bring all that together, and so what, every time I have to make a decision, I go right to the student. That's what only matters, and I look at the student, and then I use that to make the decision.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Then we'll move on to the next question. It goes to Angela Thompson first. Parents sometimes have concerns about what is being taught in the classroom. As a school board member, how would you respond to those concerns?
Well, as a school board, I think it's important to understand what our role is as a school board member. Our role is not to be involved in the day-to-day business of the school district. Our role is governance. We are a governing body that oversees policy and implementation of things that the district brings to us as a board to approve. So when it would come to that, my first response is always to send them to the leader of their school. So that would be the principal is usually the first person of contact, and then from there, the principal will connect them with the educator or whatever the issue is that they are concerned with, but to send them to the professionals in our district, who are the ones who understand what education is, they are the ones who went to schooling for edu, they are the professionals. So it is up to the parents and the families to work with the people in their buildings to overcome whatever the concern may be that they have about the curriculum that their children are learning. And our district is very transparent about these things and loves to work with community members, so I always want to connect them.
Thank you. Question goes to Scott Arkand.
Yeah, I'm going to continue on with Angela was saying. Get involved. We keep saying that. Get involved, get involved, get involved. And I would say, if you have a question, talk to the teacher first and see what they have to say. Talk about what the standards are, see why we're teaching it, where we're teaching it. That's important. If you're not comfortable, you don't get what you want, then you go to the building leadership and you talk to them. And if you don't like that, you go on, then you can come to the superintendent and to the cabinet and talk to them. We want you to be involved. I mean, as an educator, I was always willing to sit down and say, here are the industry standards, or here are the standards we're teaching, and here's why. Let's talk about it. We cannot be afraid to talk about somebody who may have a different opinion than we have. I've always been willing to sit down and talk to somebody who thinks differently. So yeah, go to the teacher, you know, find out why and what they're teaching. Hopefully, you're getting a syllabus from them, from that class, you get a heads-up right away. But yeah, talk to the teacher and then move up if you have to.
Thank you. The question goes to Tim Klecker.
Yeah, I agree. Governance, absolutely. I actually don't want to necessarily do all that much to take away teachers' ability to design their own lessons and be able to know their students well enough to teach them effectively what it is that they are supposed to be teaching. You know, but we do as a board, even though you vote as a body, you do vote on policies that set guardrails, in some ways, for curriculum. And so that is the impact that you can ultimately make, I would think, on structuring those concerns. Now, if parents have concerns, I think, as there is in any leadership team, any management team, any team in any sort of company or church group or whatever, there's an order. You speak to the teachers, you speak to the people at the head of the schools, you share the concerns. I suppose one of the things that I would encourage, though, is I think there are a number of parents, and I've spoken with them, who are concerned that if they bring those concerns to those parties, that they will be dismissed, that they will be ignored. And so I think we need to create a stronger environment around that as well through this process.
Thank you. Question goes to Dan Skar.
Well, you know, there's a saying that we used to say when you first come on to a board, which is nose in, fingers out, which means you're watching things, but you keep your fingers out of the day-to-day activities. And when it comes to a question like this, this is a tough question. One thing I want to make sure is that the district has processes in place where people, they may disagree, but they'll never tell us that we didn't give them a chance to listen, that we didn't understand what they were saying. At the end of the day, we may disagree, but don't ever accuse, please don't accuse the school district of not listening and understanding your issue. Then what I would do is I would capture these issues, I would log them, and then I would funnel them back into next year for curriculum consideration so that at least we're addressing it in a way for the future and determine whether, you know, these are legitimate concerns that should be in the curriculum for next year because it's too difficult to change curriculum. It's like an aircraft carrier.
Thank you. Question now goes to Brian Cern.
Can you repeat the question for me?
Parents sometimes have concerns about what is being taught in the classroom. As a school board member, how would you respond to those concerns?
Thank you. First of all, you know, there's a tendency, I think, to be dismissive, and I think there's a huge power and authority in just acknowledging, I realize you have this feeling and have this reaction to this, empathizing, respecting you have this situation. I understand that. I have been fortunate to have seen the process in action from my loft on the PTA, when the parent did go to the principal to see how it plays out. There is a process in this district, and it does work, but you can't be dismissive of it on the board level, and I think that creates more problems. I acknowledge your problem, I sympathize. Let me point you to the right person.
Thank you. Question goes to Scott Smith.
Thank you. You know, the school board's role, I agree, is one of governance. You know, we are there to make sure the district's meeting its obligations to students, parents, and teachers. If a parent was to come, say, for example, to me as a board member, I think first I would listen to understand, you know, what they are, what they are asking, and really understand and be able to reflect back to them that I heard. You know, and then depending on what the topic is, I would most likely first try to determine, is this a board issue or is this an administration issue? If it's a board issue, take note, bring that back. I may encourage the parent to come and speak to the board. But if it's an administration issue, I think I would ask them to respectfully go through the chain of command, you know, going to the teacher, the school, and if necessary, coming up even further. But I think we all need to respect that order and not jump around individuals, so that's how I would respond.
Thank you. Does anyone have any additional comments? Yes, Scott.
I think it's important to also know that before every board meeting at the beginning, we have a public forum, and so people can come in and initiate a discussion with us. They'll tell us, and we'll take it, and we usually will follow up. We'll have Dr. Kazmicek follow up. But there's another way, if you have a concern, go to the forum. You have three minutes, talk about it, and then we'll follow up for more information.
Yes, Scott.
Yeah, I, you know, I appreciate that process, and, but I think there's some challenges with that because it's very intimidating. The parents are not public speakers, they have a very limited amount of time, and they have a timekeeper in front of them. And then that portion of the board meeting is typically not recorded, and it's taken off. And some parents that I've spoken with feel like that's not transparent. So I think we need to revisit how parents are able to come to the board.
Thank you. Anyone else? We'll move on to the next question, and it goes to Scott Arkand first. How would you address any racial and economic disparities in our educational system?
One of the first things we need to do is we need to look for the opportunity gaps. Are there certain demographics in our district that are not scoring as well? One of the things we do know that the demographics are changing, the state demographer came out 10 years ago and said, we're going to see a change, and we're starting to see it here in white peril. We're seeing more BIPOC students join the ranks, and we're seeing the students that are classified to choose white going down. So what we have to do then is we have to be culturally responsive. We have to let every student bring their culture into the building and learn with it, whether they're going to bring their white culture, or they're going to bring whatever culture they bring, and they're going to use that to learn because it goes right back to contextual learning. They learn better when they can relate it to their lives. The other piece, we have to make sure that they feel welcome, that they come in and they see themselves in the curriculum. We need to create curriculum that has mirrors and windows so they see themselves in there and make sure they're represented in what we're teaching. Thank you.
Thank you. The question goes to Brian Cern.
I think you need to meet the students where they are. I think if you cannot bring the education and give relevance into a student's life regardless of the socio-demographic economicness of it all, it has no meaning. I think there is a problem in society that we are not aspirational as we used to be. We cannot give our children something to aspire to, and it is all tied together. We give our children something to aspire to, and we enable them to do that, and a lot of that addresses these issues. Here's something to aspire to. Here are the tools you need to get to it. Even as simple as, I want to be a captain of industry. Give something, a student a shining star, a north star to guide their ship by.
Thank you. Question goes to Tim Klecker.
Yeah, it's a really good question. It's been around for a few years, I think, on the forefront of a lot of people's minds. The way I approach this first, I think, is acceptance first, acceptance of who all people are, regardless of their background, regardless of race, gender, creed, religion, any of those types of things. Acceptance first, because when you feel accepted in a group, you can let those barriers down a little bit more, you can have some trust, and you can be open to learning from other people's experiences. And this goes both ways, or always, I should say, more than that. So we also need to realize what is really the, as Scott was talking about, you know, what is really the thing that's going on here? What's the gap, right? And how, and to Brian's point, right? How do you meet students exactly where they are so that we can address those issues? And that's going to be different, right? It's going to be, you know, are we talking about gaps in the way that they relate to people or have the ability to, or the capacity to, or in relationships, or is it the ability to understand concepts academically? Is it sports? There are some kids better at sports than other sports. So identifying where those gaps are and encouraging and fostering motivation through that, I think, is crucial.
Thank you. The question goes to Angela Thompson.
Thank you. Yes, I think that our district is already doing great work in this area and addressing some of these issues, and some of the things we've done already as a board is implement things like a racial and biased harm protocol that our staff uses as they're creating curriculum based on the Minnesota state standards, of course. You know, we have transgender and gender expansive policies that we've implemented, student rights and protections. Myself, as a student who went to this district and was othered because people always wondered, what are you, who are you, where do you come from? I understand what it's like to be one of those students. I also understand what it's like to be the student who is economically disadvantaged and has some other childhood traumas in their life that affect the way they learn at school. So thankfully, we have a wonderful team of educators that are doing things like implementing a multi-tiered system of support where we can look at students and see, well, this is where they shine and here's where they're struggling a little bit, so let's focus on these struggles and how do we get them up to meeting the standards, right? So looking at other opportunities and ways that we can address all of our students' needs.
Thank you. Question goes to Scott Smith.
Would you repeat the question, please?
How would you address any racial and economic disparities in our educational system?
Thank you. You know, in any group of individuals, any population, you're going to have disparities, you know, you know, race, you know, different races, and, you know, we know that, you know, the district is changing demographically. I agree with several of the comments. We do need to understand where people are coming from, where students are coming from. But I believe that every student, regardless of socioeconomic status, race, religion, sex, should really be allowed equal opportunity in the districts, programs. But that doesn't always mean equal outcomes, okay? Every student is unique in their gifting and their abilities, and outcomes really are the result of effort, ability, and coaching, mentoring, and teaching. And we need to be there alongside of these kids to help them in that area. So not all students are going to perform the same, given the same opportunity, and I think the board's role is to make policy that ensures that equal access is there, and that we provide oversight for any issues that arise from the community. Thank you.
Question, Mr. Dan Skar.
You know, the term equity comes from the same Latin word as equality, equity being justice without bias. And I think we should provide the training to teachers and administration on cultural differences and emphasizing the universal human rule, the golden rule, treating others the way you would treat you would want to be treated. However, I think the district may have made some errors in implementation on some of these plans. We should refrain from educational methods that make classifications, presumptions, and assumptions about race, religion, or culture. And we should use methods that unite us, not divide us, and use methods to educate, not agitate.
Thank you. Does anyone have any additional comments? And we'll move on to the next question. It goes to Tim Klecker first. Please describe how you will engage teachers, students, families, and community members in discussions regarding the direction and policies of the district.
Collaboratively. One of the things that I have made sure, made it as a bedrock of my campaign and my candidacy, is to remind parents of the responsibility that they have. I think, not making judgment in any way, but I think at some point in the past, parents, as a group, kind of handed over their responsibilities in some part to the schools. They said, I don't understand new math, it's up to you. And I think that puts a lot of pressure on the schools, and the schools decided to fill gaps, step up and do what was not happening at home. And I think we have a new generation of parents now who needs to be reminded of their level of responsibility that they have in their child's upbringing and education. And I think that we need to have that collaboration between teacher and parent. I think that is vital, so that way we can have support systems. The support doesn't just end when the school day ends, it continues at home, that we have not just two separate worlds, like a child who goes to do different homes with parents, but has one combined collaborative effort. So I think that's what I would encourage as a board member, to have that transparency and that collaboration between students, parents, and the schools.
Thank you. The question now goes to Dan Skar.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question again?
Describe how you will engage teachers, students, families, and community members in discussions regarding the direction and policies of the district.
Thank you. Well, I think I already said I love ideas, so bring ideas. And I go out and, you know, do with teachers, students, parents, to get those ideas. So I would be actively engaging with all of the stakeholders, including, you know, taxpayers who don't have children but have an interest. I agree with Scott that the policies that the board uses really discourages public comment at the board meeting. The other thing that I've noticed at the board meetings, and I've been to a lot of school board meetings across the country and other board meetings, and there's no dialogue between the board members. And I would be a spark for that catalog, or for that dialogue, if I'm elected, because I expect more dialogue and discussion with the board members in public, so we get a sense of, you know, where they are on policies and key issues.
Thank you. The question now goes to Brian Cern.
You know, five years I sat on a PTA board, in a PTA. Five years I had a school board rep. Two years, Chris Strife Oji was my rep, the last two years at North Star Elementary. If she not, did not make a meeting, she sent a one cheater, and we made sure every copy had, here's what's going on in the district. I agree to an extent that there is a communication in general to the population, but I got to tell you, from where I'm sitting as a parent, she went miles to improve that communication. She made sure that the school PTA had, here's a bullet point, outline of what's going on in the district on a monthly level. She made sure the office had a copy of it. She's a role model of the person that I would be, yeah, going into the world at large, once I have this office.
Thank you. The question now goes to Scott Smith.
Yeah. I think collaboration is very important. I think communicating is important, but there has to be a motivation from the parent's side to want that information. I think we need to bring issues up that parents can get engaged on and get rallied around, but that takes understanding, what are those issues of concern that they have? Again, I would utilize, like, to get student engagement, I would probably utilize the student rep to the school board and solicit information, and, you know, what are the issues? What are the questions that you and your peers have that you'd like to bring to the board? I'd also like to do that with teachers, and help, and perhaps have focus groups and some voice of customer sessions, if you would, using a business term, to really solicit ideas for cooperation or improvements. There's always, and no matter how good a system is, there's always room for improvement, and it's best done in collaborating with every, all the constituents, so.
Thank you. The question goes to Angela Thompson.
Thank you. This is an important question, and one that if you come to board meetings or are involved and active in your student's life, you would see that the district is doing a great many things to involve the community in all of the things that we do in the district. As board members, we are liaisons to schools. We sit on several different committees where we are involved actively, monthly, doing all kinds of things involved in what the district is doing. I would say your motivation to be involved is if you have students in the district, if you're a taxpayer in the district, you know, your voices are important in our sessions that we have. We do have a team called the Systems Accountability Team. It meets four times a year. It is a diverse body of staff members, community members, and parents. It is required by state legislation to have two-thirds community member representation, and our district does that. And in those sessions, we talk about curriculum, we talk about a great many things, and I would invite some of these fellow candidates to come to work-study sessions, where they will see and hear the board talk about all the great things the district is doing, and that's where we really get into the work.
Thank you. Question now goes to Scott Arkand.
What I've tried to bring as a board member and a community member is to meet people where they're at. The first thing I want to use is continue to encourage to get involved. There's plenty of activities, excuse me, things that students can, students and parents can get involved in, and there's student groups in different schools that they can then bring things forward to the administration and to the board, and we have to value that, and we continue to value that. I constantly am talking with teachers and hearing if things are coming up and what's going on, and having that constant communication with the group of teachers, having an open dialogue with it. I'm always available when I'm out in the community to talk with parents, and they have concerns. I have never been afraid to sit down with somebody that maybe thinks differently, because I might learn something, and hopefully they will learn something. We have to continue to do that as a board, is be open-minded. We also have to understand, when I sit down, I don't speak for the board, we have one voice, but I speak for what my beliefs are, and I make that very clear. But continuing to get them to come in, and we collaborate, we talk, and we listen. Thank you.
Additional comments? Yes, Tim.
Yeah. I think the question that I'm hearing coming out of this dialogue is, why are people not getting more involved? Why are they maybe apprehensive? Why are they hesitant to speak? And a lot of the people I've worked with, a lot of people I've spoken to, it's because they're not sure it's going to make a difference. And I think that needs to be addressed first. I think we need to continue to do that. I'm not saying it's not happening, I'm saying it needs to be a continued focus and effort to have the board members particularly, administrative, to all definitely be welcoming and opening, hearing those opinions, and actually having the people know that, or feel at least, that you're taking me seriously.
Thank you. Anyone else? Then we'll move on to the next question. It goes to Dan Skar first. Please give examples of how you've been able to work productively with those who have opposing views. Have you ever had to submit a decision that you did not agree with? If so, how did you do that?
It's a great question. I have worked within the power industry, as well as in other industries, where there is a huge stakeholder group with diverse interests, and you don't always agree. What you do is you listen, and you find out, and you understand what their position is, you try to make compromises where you can. At the end of the day, you need to, you know, you need to move forward with the decision, because no decision is not helpful. So I think by just, you know, you know, everybody wants to be liked, people want to be liked. I think using those methods to develop trust is helpful. And I think at the end of the day, when you make a decision, you got to stick with it. I've made, I've had to, been part of a board where I didn't agree with the decision, but the decision was of the board, and I supported it. I would never undermine the board on a decision.
Thank you. Question goes to Scott Smith.
Yeah, thank you. You know, difficult conversations, they're inevitable, and, but they can actually be quite healthy for an organization. My approach is to really recognize that the person across from you, their strongly-held convictions are as important to them as yours are to you. And that really helps to level-set and creates a level of mutual respect. From there, I do my best to understand a person's position, to the point where I can repeat it back, reflect it back, we know that we have agreement and understanding. Then it's all about participating in a respectful back-and-forth, where each person's idea and supporting reasons can be considered for consideration. But resolution may take several conversations. One outcome may be that the parties agree to disagree, and without, and do so without vilifying the other. As far as supporting decisions that are made that maybe I don't agree with, absolutely. The board is a body, and we have to, and as members of it, we have to support that.
Thank you. Question goes to Scott Arkand.
There's times on the board when we've never, we haven't always agreed. Here's the things you go with. You work for, first thing you make an assumption that we're being student-centered, when I'm working with the board, so it's about what's best for our students. The next thing you have to make the assumption is positive intent. And when we both agree on that, we can move forward. And even though you may think differently, and even though the vote might be opposite what I believe, through the governance model, at the board table, I said, no. I walk, as soon as I walk out the door, I'm totally behind it, because we speak as one unit, and then I support that. You know, it's dangerous when some people go out to the parking lot and then want to talk about it and how wrong it was. No, we support it. As a board currently, we support it, and we move forward, no matter how we voted on it.
Thank you. The question goes to Tim Klecker.
You know, I welcome opposing views, absolutely. I think the trick is to, you know, if they're not received in the context of, or applied in the context of what's the shared vision, the opposing views then become very abstract, and what our mission is, what we're looking at for overall success, outcomes, whatever you want to call them, comes into question. I think, you know, as Scott is saying here, that we talk about, you know, what's best for the students, but what does best mean? What does best mean in those situations? We have to have a shared understanding of what that is, so that we can, you know, we can contribute on an even level, feel like we're all being productive. As far as the board voting, you know, it's interesting to hear, if we disagree behind closed doors, but we vote as one body, I actually think the public would rather see a little bit of opposing opinions, or at least hear opposing stuff sometimes, still agreeing to certain, you know, to vote as a body, but they want to know that there are other opinions being talked about, because the biggest thing I hear when I go door-knocking is that they don't think anybody has a different opinion.
Thank you. Question goes to Brian Cern.
Growth, either administratively or educationally, is basically thesis antithesis, and they merge into the new thesis. To everyone's point, I do like well-reasoned disagreement. I don't like it when it becomes, oh, I disagree with you, stop. No, why? I want to learn, I want to understand. I tend to work collaboratively, and I find that most people, as long as you have a shared end goal, tend to find the same way, that to work, most people want to work together to disagree for the sake of disagreement. While maybe great television drama is not necessarily something that I've run into all that much in real life, but a board's decision is a board's decision at the end of the day, when all is said and done. Well-reasoned, well-thought-out, you may agree with parts, you may disagree with parts, but the decision's a decision.
Thank you. Question goes to Angela Thompson.
Yes, I agree with many of the things that have been said up here. I think that learning from each other is an important aspect of being just a person in life. I love learning other people's points of views and reasonings, why they believe the things that they believe. Doesn't mean that I have to agree with the things that they believe, but it does give me the opportunity to have a understanding of where they're coming from, and I believe that is important as a school board member. I have disagreed many times with school board members. Scott and I have disagreed ourselves on items that have come to the board. And at the end of the day, when we vote, I support the vote as it was. With that said, that doesn't mean that you end where you disagreed, or where maybe you had some concerns, it just means that you can still continue to work a little bit with administration on some of those concerns, and find a way to come together to get to a point where everybody feels that they're seen and supported in our district, because it is important that we let all voices be at our table.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Then we'll move on to the next question, and it goes to Scott Arkand first. Each time a tragic school shooting occurs in our country, there are calls for increased safety measures in schools. Are there additional actions you would support that be taken by the school board to ensure safety in our schools, or are the present measures adequate?
School safety is very tough, because schools are most vulnerable when students are coming and students are leaving, and so that's where we really have to work, have supervision. We have teachers who are vigilant, excuse me. Maybe, you know, you should have a pass, so if I see somebody in my building that doesn't have a pass, a sticker or whatever, a visitor's pass, we stop and we ask them, can we help you? Just that, addressing people when they're in our buildings, getting to know who they are, that's helpful. We have the doors that are locked, they have to come through the system, we've upgraded our security cameras, we've updated our procedures, our, what we do in the buildings. We do the best we can, but I, like I said, it's the beginning of the day and the end of the day that concerns me, because our doors have to be open for people to come in and go.
Thank you. Question goes to Angela Thompson.
Well, there are some things that I think need to happen on the legislative end that don't have anything to do with us, particularly in the, in the school board, to help implement proper gun safety in our country. I find it tragic that we have students who have to go through drills to learn what to do in case there's an active shooter in their building, and that their lives are then in risk. As an example, my daughter, when we were discussing cell phone policy and having to give students the access to their phones, but also ensuring that they're in classroom time, is focused on their learning and education. And when your child says to you, when you say that there's a possibility their cellphones may be taken away during the day, and their immediate response, but mom, what happens if? What happens if what? If I need to call you? Well, you go to the office and you do what I did when I was a kid in school, and they will, no, that's not what I'm talking about, mom. What if it is the last time I get to send you a message? To me, that is something that I, that I struggle with every day, and I don't know what the exact answers are, but our school, thankfully, our bond referendum allowed our schools to implement some great lockdown safety protocols.
Thank you. Question goes to Dan Skar.
Yeah, when I look at school safety, I look at, there's three legs to the stool. There's physical security, which would include the SRO cameras. One of the things that we found, working with schools, as well, as well as other critical infrastructure, is that the cameras are always pointed at entry points into the facilities rather than out, so that, so we flip the cameras and added cameras, so you got to look at the perimeter, so you know what's coming at you. The second one is social media. I've been working with a former FBI profiler who was a first responder at Columbine. She said that, based on their internet traffic, they would have been able to identify these, these two students that did this tragic event. And we can learn from that with AI, working with law enforcement, monitoring social media. The third leg of the stool is human factors, training on what the red flags are. When you see a red flag, talk to the student, find out more, don't let it go, make a, you know, make sure that we're following up with that.
Thank you. Question goes to Tim Klecker.
Angela, I've had those conversations with my kids, too. I'm with you on that one. It is, it is very much a tragic reality that we have to talk about. It is, it is very much a tragic reality that we have to talk about this as much as we do. I've toured the new school. I've noticed that the, the main entryways are a distance away from classrooms, which I think is by design, so that we can, God forbid, if anything happens at the entry points, that we have plenty of time to inform our, our classrooms and our teachers. I think, I think a lot of this is a cultural issue, and I think the school can only do so much to respond to cultural issues. I think that the value for human life is, is something that always comes into question when it comes to events that we hear like this, even if it's in gesture joking, as in the case of when students make, you know, fake or prank kind of claims that things are going to happen. And I also think that a lot of the tensions that cause a student to possibly do this come from within the school system. So it is very important to have that sense of community and citizenship, which I think comes up a lot in the dialogue with the school board, and that we continue to promote responsibility across all students, parents, administration.
Thank you. Question goes to Scott Smith.
Yeah, you know, it's a, it's a very difficult subject, and nobody wants to be put in that position or that situation. A lot of times, I think there are policies in place, there are procedures in place, and that a lot of times in these shootings is, policy was not followed, or procedures were not followed. Safeguards were not kept up to date, maintained. So I think first and foremost in a district, you need to make sure all of those things are taken care of, and that everybody is very clear on what they need to do if they see somebody who doesn't have a hall pass, who's not there. So I think first and foremost, you know, that's extremely important. I, you know, as far as having cellphones in the classroom and that for emergency phone calls, you know, I, I think there's a place for cellphones, but I don't think it's with the kids at all times during the day. So that's it. Thank you.
Question goes to Brian Cern.
With my fellow parents up here, I'm sure they'll echo the feeling that says it saddens me to no end at a certain point that my kids treats having an active shooter drill like that's just one of those things. It shouldn't ever be one of those things. I echo everyone that said. I don't know if it is a school board per se issue. I think it is a legislative issue. I think that there are wonderful things in all of our new facilities to try the best to mitigate everything that we had. I think investing heavily in behavior, health in the schools, to watch for red flags in our students, to be there to counsel any survivors, you know, knock on wood that there, something comes up, to try to mitigate any warning signs that come up is a worthwhile investment. And to just be vigilant.
Thank you. Any additional comments? We'll move on to the next question. It goes to Dan Scar first. This will be our last question, too. School districts across the state will be required to adopt their own policies regarding cellphone usage by March 2025. What should be the policy for White Bear Lake High School and the two middle schools?
Well, this is something that I'm very familiar with. Recently, I've been working with some school districts in, in the state of Montana, as well as Florida, on this very issue. And it has to do with, you know, our phones is a gateway to a lot of disruptive behavior. The Los Angeles County Schools bans, banned phones. They did a study in Norway where for sixth grader, they banned stuff, banned phones, and all of their academic performance went up. So, you know, my position would be to work with the parents, the community, to work on a policy so that students don't have access to their, to their phones, or the internet on their phones during class, during school.
Thank you. Question goes to Scott Arkand.
Currently, in our elementary and middle schools, students are not allowed to have their phones in class. I, we're, the high school moving forward, we're asking for the same thing, that during class time, students not have their phones. They should put them in the locker. In between classes, I think, we're talking about that. Can they access their phones then? Yeah, that's going to be a building decision. But we definitely, when educational activities are happening, students don't need their phones, because they already have Chromebooks. And I agree, it's a distraction, that the texting, the tweeting, whatever, takes away. And we know that if not controlled, you can lose 30% of your instructional time due to cellphone distractions. So it's important that we put the phones away and we work on our instruction rather than phones.
Thank you. Question goes to Tim Klecker.
You know, I wish there was a school mode that you could change your cellphone to, like an airplane mode, where we only allow so many things on the phone to function, necessary things for safety possibly, or anything additional. But I think it's also important to be knowledgeable about the psychological reality of phone addiction when it comes to kids, especially in social issues, right? Did somebody message me back, sitting there itching, wondering if a text message is waiting for you, distracts you from the classroom. So I think the board has done, I've, I've been great about the cellphone stuff that the board has passed recently. I've been really happy to see that. I had a discussion last board meeting about, you know, what do you do with smartwatches and things like that, which also could be distracting. And I, I applaud that for sure, because I think it is a distraction. But I also think there's additional things that, not that we're not, but things to be aware of when it comes to, even if the phone is turned off or put into the bag, the brain is not necessarily disconnected. And how do we foster an environment that continues to encourage students to try to disconnect that way, to really be fully present, and see what that impact is going to be? I think that's the next step that we can address as a school.
Thank you. Question goes to Scott Smith.
Yeah, you know, I guess I was really encouraged at the board meeting where there was a presentation, I think from one of the middle school teachers, about how they were implementing the cellphone policy, and then also communicating about the changes at the high school, as they're now coming together with all four grades, and doing that ahead of the deadline for the state. So, you know, my hat, hat off, hats off to the district and the board members who are supporting that. I think it's extremely important, however, that we then follow up and make sure that how do the teachers enforce, you know, whatever the schools adopt, and what does that look like, and, and what are the consequences if students are, are not abiding by the rule. And also, you know, how do we teach responsible cellphone use in the upper grades? Because it is addictive. Cellphones are addictive. I think we all know that it can have negative impacts. And so I think there's more to do, and I think there will be some adoption needed to the current policy, or whatever policy we land on.
Thank you. Question goes to Angela Thompson.
Yes, I, you know, I agree with many of the things that have been set up here, and I think that cellphones are a great distraction to our students, but also to the parents and the community, and just to all of us in general, right? Like, I know that when I forget my cellphone at home, I don't even know how to function anymore. And I grew up without a cellphone when I was, when I was a student. And I'm very thankful for that, because I, I didn't have that added distraction in my life. But I think it also goes back to at home. What are families at home doing to help their children learn how to control their, their ability to know when to put their phone down and when to have their phone, right? It is not just only the school district's responsibility to teach our students how to manage their cellphone use. So I would ask our families to also support the cellphone policy that the district has implemented. And we do plan to review it in a year, because we understand it is a complicated process. That is going to take additional steps and reach out to the district staff, because they can explain what the protocol is and what the consequences will be. There's like a four-step process.
Thank you. Question goes to Brian Cern.
If you don't sell that school mode idea, let me know, because I will. I think that's a great idea. I, again, applause to the school board for not only taking the first steps and acknowledging that's a hard idea, but coming back to an ear, acknowledging that it's continually evolving. And I'd love to see that fall onto the annual review. I'm, you know, not during class. I'm really simple this way. Not during class, not during dinner. I think the removal to many points up here of that barrier is a good thing. I think that keep people-on-people learning is invaluable, and mitigate the distraction. People do better the less they have to worry about being computer-based, being, you know, hunger, being economic, being socio. Keep it all even and good.
Thank you. That was our last question. And we'll now turn to closing statements, which we will do in reverse alphabetical order. Each candidate will have one minute for their closing statement to summarize their qualifications and positions. And we'll begin with Angela Thompson.
Well, again, thank you for this opportunity. I have greatly appreciated it. And I think we have some wonderful opportunities for the community members to choose where they think that the district should continue to go in the future. I think that the things that we have done as a board currently are wonderful things that are going to help our district be a district that we are already being looked at by other districts in our community and in the country, because of things that our district leaders have started implementing before the COVID pandemic hit, and then really took action once COVID pandemic hit, and really started working even harder on how can we help our students be successful in their academic career. And so, you know, we have a lot of new curriculum that we're implementing. Nothing hard is, nothing good is easy, right? Like, you have to work hard at these things, and it takes time. So come to our board meetings, listen to what we are doing, reach out to your district. They will help you understand what we are doing. And we are an open board. We love community engagement.
Thank you. With his closing statement is Scott Smith.
Yeah, my thanks again to the League of Women Voters, as well as to all of the candidates that are here this morning. I believe that White Bear District has a really strong foundation. It also has a legacy that many people that I've spoken with cherish. The recent past has been challenging to our community, which has been impacted by events both locally and nationally. And the previous board or the current board has dealt with some very difficult things. Yet despite that, they succeeded in securing funding to make critical improvements to the infrastructure. They established a strategic plan to set the course for the future. However, among all that positive momentum, you know, we've really struggled to meet the primary mission of academic success and positive progression towards proficiency in the basics of reading, math, and science. As a board member, I will commit to build upon the foundation that's been set in order to improve academic outcomes, support teachers with appropriate resources, and engage parents to ensure their voice and concerns are heard and acted upon with sincerity, expediency. Thank you, and I would appreciate your vote in November.
Thank you. Now with his closing statement is Dan Scar.
Thank you, League of Women Voters, for hosting this. And I just want to say, you know, based on hearing all the candidates, I think all six of us should be on the board. I like everybody sitting here. They're all great. But we only have three seats. Everyone here cares about kids, teachers, and our community, but it takes more. It takes leadership to be an effective board leader. I'm qualified in leadership with, for this school board. I've sat on board. I've testified before federal and state agencies. I understand government. I have experience working across the country with schools. I've seen a lot. I know what works and what doesn't works. We got too much clutter in the schools, not enough focus on kids and education. Our trajectory is worse today than it was yesterday. Poor academics, low rankings, losing students, cluttered vision. The board needs new leadership and know-how to steer us to a better place. Clarity. We need change, and change is good. It's healthy. It means growth. Building on our successes and moving forward. I'm seasoned, battle-tested, ready now. It's time for new leadership and growth. Restore the roar in the bear.
Thank you. And now with his closing statement, Tim Klecker.
Again, like everybody else, I just want to thank the League of Women Voters for this opportunity today. You know, I've long felt that the values of this school system are meant to represent the values of the community in which they reside. And I fully believe that the quality of our children's education is directly and powerfully linked to the potential quality of their future lives. And therefore, we have a responsibility as a community and as a school, to make sure that we are helping students to grow, to discover who they are, to learn the right skills that they need in order to function once they get out in that real world. Unfortunately, right now, we're seeing proficiency scores, which I know there's other measurements has been mentioned here, but we are seeing proficiency scores floating around that 50%, which makes me feel like at graduation, every other diploma that we hand out should also be given an apology note. Now, there's a lot that goes into the success of a student, and I appreciate that the school system is trying to be diverse and well-rounded around those opportunities. We have a new building of the highest quality. It looks wonderful. Let's just make sure that the education now matches that quality. Vote for me in November.
Thank you. Now with his closing statement, Brian Cern.
Thanks for having me. Appreciate it. We all bring good candidate qualities to a candidacy. That's great. We're all immensely qualified within our own field. I'm just a concerned and involved dad. I get up, take my kid to the bus stop, do my job. If I'm available, take a mid-afternoon break. I try to walk down the bus stop, pick him up, ask him how he is, walk him home, make him a snack, get back to work. It's simple. In my free time for the past many years, I've gotten into the habit of going into the schools as much as I can to ask my principal and my kids' students and administrators and educators, you need anything? Anything I can do? And they're doing really well with what they have. And they have a lot. And I just want to keep doing that job, see if I can raise the bar a little bit more. Thanks.
Thank you. Now with his closing statement, Scott Arkand.
This is my home. It's like your home. I care about it. I'm continually to fight for the students. I'm continually to ask the questions. I'm continuing to listen. I bring over 38 years of educational experience in how students learn, how, what the standards are, how we move forward. I also have the ability to listen. I listen to people when they talk to me. I, I listen to what their concerns are, and I'm able to talk to them about it. I'm asking you to vote for me for four more years, so that we can continue to move forward as a system to meet the needs of our students. I have strong support for our career pathways, so that students can explore different careers. So when they leave our system, they know they have a, they have a trajectory of where they're going to go. I have a strong support for skilled labor. We are short on skilled labor, and there are good jobs. I, I just believe we need to provide our students a pathway. We need to make sure that they, they know their wise, and we need to continue as a community, whether we win or lose, continually to fight for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes our forum for the White Bear School District School Board race. Our website, lvw-wbla.org, has listings for all of our candidates' forums and links where you could submit questions for these forums. You can view the recording of this forum and all of our forums on our YouTube channel, League of Women Voters, White Bear Lake area. You can also look for it on your local cable channel at times of their choosing. Thank you, and remember to vote. Early voting is September 20th through November 4th, and Election Day is November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you.